Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the December 2nd, 2020 meeting of the City of Norwood Planning Commission. The time is now 3:30 PM. Mrs. Towns, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Snyder.
Present.
Director Murphy.
Present.
Drop Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mrs. Sickinger.
Present.
Before we start, I've got two items that I'd like to just go over. We have three different public hearings this afternoon. The first one will be for the property on Sherman Avenue. The second one is the Wesley Avenue property. And third is the Old Playing Card Company. If you -- I'm sorry.
Does it -- your agenda, the first one is Sherman, the second one is Factory, and the first one is Wesley.
Okay. If you're not comfortable sitting in the -- everybody's sitting in the room, you're more than welcome to stand in the hall, and we can call you when you're ready. The second item is, I am an interim chairman for this time. Please bear with me. Mr. Chris Brown is no longer on the Planning Commission. He has taken a position outside the City of Norwood. I do want to thank him for all of his years of service on the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've done the roll call. We will first -- there is -- first of all, there is no old business, so we will move into the nomination of chairman. Now, ask for nominations.
I'll nominate John Brown as chairman of the Planning Commission.
I second it.
Second by Mrs. Sickinger. Are any discussion?
I'll discuss it. John's been on the Planning Commission for many years now. The fact that Chris had to resign and step back, I think Chris, again, I'd echo what John said. You know, he did a great job, and I'm sure John will do a great job also for us as chairman of the commission.
We have a motion on the floor. You have a second. All those in favor? Erwin. Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Director Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
I think I should abstain.
Mrs. Sickinger.
All right. The motion passes. Please. Yeah. Okay, moving on to new business. We will at this time open the public hearing. This is one Sherman Avenue first. What do we need to get for? We will now have the public hearing, the first public hearing. Jim Ritter, architect representing the owners of 1631 Sherman Avenue Gaslight Property, LLC, located within a neighborhood business zoning district with a planned unit development overlay, NBD slash PUD, submitting a preliminary plan for a planned unit development of approximately 2.503 acres, as noted on the Hamilton County Auditor website, for 86 one and two-bedroom apartments. If you haven't been here for a public hearing before, we will listen to the presenters at first, ask them if there's anyone wishing to speak regarding this item in favor of it. Then we will have anyone wishing to speak against the proposal. So at this time, if I call Mr. Ritter or his, whoever is with him, if they would like to come up, just please give your name, your company, and your company address.
Thank you. My name's Jim Ritter. I'm an architect. Our address is 3627 West Fork Road. And Lisa Skolvik is with us. And she's at 1400 Race. And both of us are representing Dave Taylor, who's the owner of Gaslight Properties. And Lisa's company would be doing the development, the onsite work, if the project goes ahead. Well, first of all, this is the first time we really had a chance to meet with anybody on this project. And there's six or seven pages of drawings and information and documentation. It's hard to express everything in five minutes. I think we have a design that's representative of what would work in Norwood. And I haven't heard any feedback negatively. And so maybe I just go through the seven items that have been brought to our attention, okay? And I guess the first is the legal description. And the legal description that we had, that we had forwarded to us, is incomplete. So we'll take care of that. But the drawings and the site plan are correct because we've verified that with the auditor's website, okay? Number two is a discussion about common space, and I'd like to put that off to the end because we've sent over a couple of prelims for Dan to review, and that really hasn't been brought to our attention until we got this notice last week. Number three is, there's no landscaping. Well, we have a prelim, and we'll be able to get a registered landscape architect onboard and provide the planning. That should not be a major effort. There's no signage detail. That's easy to handle. Number four is, I'm sorry, number four is the signage. Number five is scheduling, and there's a discussion in the letter that we wrote to you in that we would assume that we would build the western portion of the complex first, which is four or five buildings, because that side of the project is lower on the hillside, and that's where the detention, storm detention would occur. And then if the project is successful, then we would move on to the eastern portion and finish up the development. Okay. Then number six is, it wasn't clear from the grading about handicap accessibility. There are three cross-sections, three lateral cross-sections in the packet. And the cross-section showing what the existing grades are and the proposed grades are. And literally six or five of the eight, five of the seven buildings or four of the seven buildings would be totally handicap accessible.
I'm sorry, would be what?
Would be totally handicap accessible. The reviewer probably just didn't have a chance to pick that up. The last item, number seven, was trash removal. We've talked to Rumke, and their position is that we have the correct number of dumpster locations. And Lisa was really sharp to pick up the fact that, well, she's involved with another complex, and if there is a problem, when you have 50 or 70 units, you can get trash pickup done twice a week. And the maximum number of eight-yard containers would be four. But I don't think we want to have four containers all over the site. I think two locations should certainly be sufficient. And the count is that Rumke typically identifies one carton per single-family use. And 16 cartons make an 18 cube container. And you work that out, you end up with a maximum of four. But that's for a single-family house, and for apartments, it would be less. So I think that's easy to handle. But then we need to go back to item number two, and that is the common space. And I think we need some direction from the city as to what they're looking for here. Has anybody had a chance to think about that?
Well, if I may.
Go ahead.
You know, looking at the, there's not much green space at all on this. And recognize that, we recognize that it's right up, about it up against a park, and there's plenty of back. But there's really no green space whatsoever. If a person had a kid, which you're gonna, you have two families or two-bedroom units in here. I mean, there's zero area for anyone to go outside and do anything. There's not, there's not even, on the west part of it, where you're putting five units in, it's a parking lot and five big buildings with very minimal green space whatsoever. So that is a concern, absolutely a concern. In this day and age where there are so many pets and so many other things that people want to do outside, there's, you have asphalt and buildings and a very small amount of green space.
Okay. All right. Part of that discussion is that we think we need to have about one and a half parking spaces per apartment, okay? Because if you end up with less than that, you don't end up with as good a resident. And so I think what we have to do is we've got to go back to the drawing boards and see what we can do to work that out. And so we're looking for a softer space on this site. Or a less dense site is what we're looking for.
Less density would be.
We could certainly put more units on the project, on the property, but then it becomes a four-story or a five-story building, and we know that that really isn't compatible with the neighborhood.
Have you or any of your representatives talked to Mr. Bly or anybody in the Building Department about these seven items?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Bly is typically kind of hard to get a hold of.
Would Mark be able to help them with these seven items? No?
I mean, he can talk to Mark, but it's, those were Dan's comments to Planning Commission, which Mr. Ritter asked for so that he could be prepared so that he would come here and you guys ask him about them without being prepared. So it's, that's what, I mean, it's preliminary.
Right.
But I can read that to Dan again and ask him.
I mean, Carrie does a great job of keeping everything going over here, because I've worked here on and off for, you know, 25 years.
I would say, in my opinion, right now, the, I mean, the legal description, that can be fixed very easily.
Yeah, that's easy.
Is going to be a common space, landscaping plans, because it does butt up to two different parks and two different jurisdictions along with a major street. And the federal requirements for the handicap accessibility, just to show it on the design.
Yeah, yeah. But I think for a first run-through, I think we've got a lot of information.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I guess I haven't heard any comments on the building itself and whether you think it matches out with the neighborhood. I mean, Sherman's kind of the gateway from the west.
Well, it does look a lot better than what was there, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, you have the nursing homes across the street, and this property would be higher in than the immediate neighborhood directly just east of this. And then the neighborhood gets better. You know, it's hills and valleys, and it's over time. Mr. Taylor, I mean, I've worked with Dave on and off for seven or eight years. He runs about 1,400 units. Everything that he has is market-driven. There's no subsidized housing or anything like that. I think he's looking to maybe get 25 or maybe 30% of the complex maybe from XU. Because a lot of his property is around University of Cincinnati, so he knows how to maintain that property well and run that property well with the students.
Well, Gaslight definitely has a reputation in Clifton and does a lot of work and does have some nice properties. I mean, they've put a lot into it. I am concerned, there's a couple areas that I'm concerned, and Mr. Bly brought them up. I mean, the phasing schedule is, you explained that, you're planning on doing the five buildings down by the detention retention basin area first, and then you would do the other two. I don't know. This is a small project for an organization like Gaslight. I can't see why they wouldn't just do both.
I don't know. I wouldn't say that. I would say it's a medium-sized project. I mean, Dave and Lisa and myself will be on it every day, it's not, yeah.
Okay.
I think that, if I may answer your question, in phasing, construction phases, we'll actually all be under one, because when we go for financing, we're not going to go twice. It's all going to be under one loan.
Well, and that would be a concern of mine, is if you're doing it in two phases, you build the five and then say, well.
No.
Okay. You know, I recognize that Dan is bringing up, Mr. Bly's bringing up the dumpster concerns. I'm also concerned with the parking. I know that you have one-bedroom apartments in there, and then you have two-bedroom apartments. There's, anybody who's in a two-bedroom, it's going to be two cars.
Two cars.
So when you, when you say, well, one, you know, you're looking at 125 in there, that's a concern of mine. There's going to be parking on the street in front. Do you guys reckon, is there, there is parking on that side of the street?
Uh, no. As of right now, it's a fire lane.
But there is parking on the other side?
On the north side, yes.
Was it a fire lane because of the fun factory of the building that was there? And would that be something that would change with this?
All of Sherman on the south side, from Victory Parkway to Allison, is a fire lane.
Well, if I can just throw this in, I would not want to count on any parking on Sherman Avenue. It really should be handled in the complex.
I totally agree. But we know with 125, it's, they're going to be out on the street. That's guaranteed.
And to your thought, we have to make the project less dense and provide some public space. So that's probably going to mean one less building, and then we'll probably be at 1.7 parking spaces per unit or something like that.
And the same discussion is that, looking at the layout of this, you've got a curb, and you've got a sidewalk, a small devil strip, and a very, very small green space between the street and the building.
Okay.
And cars driving past in that lane. It's not like that's a, there's not a parking lane in front of it. So that would be another concern of mine. And I'm not sure how you get past that, you know.
You saying a step back from Sherman?
Yeah. It's going to be tight. Now, granted, the focus of the building is towards the back, is towards the parking lot area when people come in. But you're still going to have people that walk up and down that sidewalk, and it's going to be, it's going to be close, tight.
Yeah, well, maybe that setback should be greater, and then between the buildings and the mass parking should be shorter or something.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have some landscaping that's going to help offer. Yeah, we showed that in the elevation, but not in the plan yet.
Right.
And we tried to align the ingress and egress out with Baker Street.
And I appreciate that. I think that's the right move.
And I know Lisa was talking to Dave the other day about the rental office. Was that still up in the air or?
I mean, rental office, maybe doesn't have to be onsite, but he'll need some form of a maintenance office. Doesn't have to be 1,200 square feet. No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
So we can, we can wiggle that out to help with the 25% public space.
Yeah, I would be surprised if you'd have a rental office with a leasing person sitting in the office for 86 units.
With the maintenance, maintenance to store stuff, so when his maintenance guys come from Clifton, they're not loving stuff from Clifton.
Okay.
So I had a few questions.
Well, before we start, let's, wait, let's hold off on questions for right now. Are you finished with your presentation, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the proposal? Anyone else to speak for the proposal? Mr. Ritter, we probably will be calling you back up. Is there anyone who would like to speak against the proposal? Is there anyone to speak against the proposal? Okay, at this time, we are going to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting. And at this point, we can discuss what was presented. Thank you. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Snyder?
Second.
Mr. Murphy, call the roll, please.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Director Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Now, would you like to ask a question?
Yes. So given the proximity to Xavier, is, are you looking at off, like, off-campus housing? Is that what this is primarily going to be?
Yeah.
Not, I'm sorry, hold on. Not entirely. This is market-rate housing. It's one and two-bedroom units. If there are some Xavier students, then yes, but they probably, it wouldn't be student housing if that's where you're going.
No. I would hope not.
No.
Okay. So given it's going to be Xavier students, have you considered anything with, like, electric vehicle charging stations or maybe a bus stop or something to take them closer to campus? Has any of that been taken into consideration?
No.
No, but we would.
We need you to come up to the microphone.
If you could, come up to the microphone, please.
No, we would be open to the electric bike, because we've done that on other properties. We would absolutely, if we have the room. I think with this site, it's a tough site. I mean, it's a shallow site. It's two and a half acres. It's more long than it is deep. So I think we're trying to nestle in as many units as we can. Typically, typically, we would, we would want to do more than 100 units. We just can't, we can't, the numbers don't work doing that. So it's the 84 units that we got. And the parking, I don't disagree with you on the parking, but I mean, we're, we don't have it, we don't have any, we don't have much more room to squeeze any more parking spaces in. And quite frankly, with a development like this, you just don't want it to be a sea of parking either. So I like the fact that the rules are that you have to have these, these buildings between the parking and the street, so you're not looking at a sea of parking. But it's a great point with the electric cars. Love to do electric cars and/or electric bikes if we have the room.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else, Pam? Do you have anything else? Okay. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Bly mentions the dumpsters appear to be undersized and too far from the dwellings to use. What size dumpster were you proposing in the beginning?
It'd be an eight-yard dumpster. And there'd be two of them.
I mean, because the way the building's laid out, you have a dumpster at the one end for the fewer buildings, and a same-size dumpster at the other end for the larger building. And Dan's concern was the distance to walk to put out your garbage. And I know with, anytime you have a private dumpster, and we have trouble with our own hears, that people see a dumpster, and next thing you know, mattresses grow alongside of it.
It's a magnet.
And things that you have no idea where they came from, and the dumpster gets overwhelmed. So definitely, I would, for this size unit, probably at least three dumpsters to start, and then you could always modify that, because otherwise, I think you're going to have a nightmare, because I've not to see, yet to see an apartment building that the tenants do what they're supposed to do.
Okay.
So, you know, definitely 10-yard for standard size, and possibly three of them. And I agree with Mr. Bly that the long end of the building is going to be walking a pretty good distance unless you live right there to come out your door.
Well, maybe we put it, we put that third dumpster location in the middle, because I, when you enter and leave the property, I guess I'd like to see some landscaping and not face a dumpster.
Right. And if you have to delimit a unit for the green space and that, I mean, it, I mean, it's an investment. I understand you want a return on your investment, but garbage is important. And then obviously, if it's not monitored, you know what's going to happen. Somebody's going to pull in there and be offloading all sorts of stuff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Could you be opposed to, on the west side, let's get, I get the walking distance, but on the west side, could we put two dumpsters? Because typically, let's just say, we did a project, it was 110 units, right? So we have an eight-yard dumpster, and then we have recycle, because everybody's going to want recycle. So that eight-yard dumpster gets picked up four days a week. So we're not, instead of having three dumpsters on this site, because again, now you're looking at a parking lot and dumpsters. If we have it, so we monitor the residents and how much trash they accumulate. At the beginning, they'll accumulate a lot, at the end, they won't. We start off with two days a week, and then we up it as we see trash. And this will, this could go five days a week.
Right.
On some of our projects, we're six days, but we have restaurants in our, in our things too. I just, it would be, I'd hate to see this project, to your point, there's no greenscape, there's asphalt and Rumke dumpsters. It'd be a hard sell for, to lease it to a resident, quite frankly. So would you be opposed if we looked at that? Getting one, an eight-yard dumpster and then a recycle? Because we have to have recycle.
Right. I mean, you know, we all know, you know, recycling in our city's at 12 and a half percent right now. We'd love everybody to recycle and break down boxes, which hardly anybody does. They throw it out and expect Rumke to take care of it. So educating the tenants.
Yeah.
You know, that this is what we need them to do for recycling, for, you know, the whole environment plus.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we do get a benefit in the City of Norwood by how much we recycle, so.
Sure, sure.
Offering that, and then, you know, just the green space issue. You're going to have kids there, and, you know, they're going to need a place to play, and otherwise, they'll be playing in a parking lot. And I think some green space in some way, somewhere, and you are pressed for space, but.
Yep.
I think that would be a definite plus for the residents. I mean.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I agree with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can you talk about, Mr. Ritter, talk about the exterior elements of this property? The asphalt shingles, the dimensional asphalt shingles? What's the, I mean, hopefully, we're not looking just at a bunch of siding. It looks like you have creek stone finish and brick fascia.
Yeah, we have some foundation stone, we have brick, we have some siding accents, textured shingles, absolutely.
Okay. So you are planning on continuing with what's presented here and the different textures and visual aspects of it?
Yeah. I think, I mean, I think what we're doing here is we're refining it, and we come back with a refined prelim. And we'll call it out.
Okay.
And take care, we'll take care of that, the written description and the signage, and add the landscaping, and de-densify the site, yes, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is terrific to get the feedback. This is really the first time we've had a chance to get feedback.
Okay, you're welcome.
At this point, do you, would it be in everybody's opinion that this should be tabled until they get all their ducks in a row as far as?
Yeah, we couldn't approve a conditional upon all that, so, yeah, they're going to have to come back, yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table this?
To a time uncertain, to a time in the future? Sure, yes. Is that the proper?
If you table it to time uncertain versus the next meeting, then it's all re-notified and the whole thing. If you table it to a specific meeting date, then we don't have to re-notify the citizens.
Would you be able to get this taken care of by the first meeting in January?
We can get it done in the three-day session for you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
January.
January 6th is the next meeting.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring this back out at the January 6th meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Murphy? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're making it real easy, Jane. It's very simple, easy.
I've got to ask the boss, because like I said, I'm new to a lot of this. At this point, we will close our. Regular meeting. And move into the next public hearing, which is.
Factory 54.
I'm sorry.
Factory 52.
Thank you.
Nicholas Longfelder, Vice President of Development, PLK, submitting the final planned unit development, final planned unit development, PUD, plan for Factory 52, located within a light manufacturing zoning district with a planned unit development overlay, M1 slash PUD, at 4590 Beach Street, Norwood, Ohio 45212. M-one slash PUD at forty-five ninety Beach Street, Norwood, Ohio, four-five-two-one-two, identified by the Hamilton County Auditor's Office as book six-five-one, page zero-zero-one-nine, partial zero-one-two-five dash zero-zero. Is there anyone present to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone in favor of speaking in favor? Are they out in the hallway, maybe?
Well, our presentation or just?
Yes, presentation.
I'm sorry. I'll even follow in favor. I followed that.
I'm sorry.
I thought you were back there.
I'm back there. Just standing back there.
We thought you were going to come up against.
I haven't slept, honestly, I haven't slept in a couple of days, so it would've been nice to get a little bit, didn't happen.
Nick, for those of us that, in the audience or on TV that don't know you, please give your name and your company address.
Thank you. Nicholas Linganfelter, PLK Communities, fifty-nine oh five East Galvez Road, Cincinnati. So, thank you very much. And I'm sure we've all, everybody's kind of familiar with the project. So, what I wanted to just take a few minutes today is I brought our architects with us, our traffic engineers, anybody that can help answer questions that I can't, because I always feel like it's better that you ask the expert. As much as I try to know a lot, we have done a lot in a short amount of time. So, again, thank you for everybody taking the time today. Couple of quick things, as you notice, we did announce the name of the project today as Factory Fifty-two. We announced our new logo, something we're very proud of. It get really, what we wanted to do is, most people are saying Norwood historically was a manufacturing area where people left the city of Cincinnati in late eighteen hundreds. So, we wanted to give a nod to that. Norwood will also be the only, most midwestern cities have a factory district. We don't. So, we wanted to give that option here and the fifty-two gives a nod to the U.S. plane card. We've got the clock tower denoted in the logo. We've got the crown because in Norwood, obviously, is the gem of the Highlands of the Queen City Crown. And then we've got the peace leaves from Lady Liberty. So, we wanted to make sure we really paid attention to the history of the site because that's something we've always done since day one. So, and today, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of all the changes you've had since your preliminary, what the current Phase One is made up of, the current residential unit mix with potential expansion through Phase One, how we're approaching parking for the current phase, the design materials, because that was something that was very important to a lot of people, to make sure that we had quality materials with a quality product that was going to last a long time. So, I wanted MSA to talk to you briefly about why they chose the materials they chose. And then also, we have a high level traffic study that was done to the ODOT standards. The city of Norwood did receive a copy roughly a month ago. It is a very lengthy report, but it has been turned over to the city as well. And they'll go over their brief recommendations and assumptions. Finally, we'll just, we wanted to go over what we're doing for plans for bicycles. So, Colleen's going to talk briefly because Peter Kleinkamp is now on the board of Crown of the Queen City and then working on how we can do a bike connector to the site and what we've done specifically on how we get it there. So, it, it is very preliminary, but we did want to make sure everybody's aware of that because we know that they've tried state trails and a few others have spoken to the city. So, with that, what was the major changes that we adjusted since the first time you saw the plan? Most recognizably, we've officially detached the clock tower. When we really stepped back and thought about this, we felt like we weren't making it the iconic symbol that it needed to be. This is the number one thing that everybody in their survey stated would needed to be addressed. So, what we wanted to do was give that something. We've actually detached the building as a whole. You've got a separate building that structurally sits there to support it, but the public can now go through that whole clock tower. We actually have plans that allow us to put an elevator through the middle to the top to create an observed excavation deck, very similar to what you see up at Summit Park as well. And the building behind it is going to be some form of retail, some second floor office. And then we've also got a coffee shop and small leasing center in there. So, we did restore the roundabout, which Mr. Mary brought up quite a few times. And you were right about that. We needed to make that correction and we did. And we've also, we're trying to find some type of water feature that goes in front. Historically, when the building was built, there was always a water feature there. And we wanted to make sure we had something that gave it that traditional formal power entrance as you came in that said, "You have come to a new destination." So, we, finally, the thing that we did is originally we had shown the brewery in the front and we felt like this was detracting from the clock tower. So, we've had a couple breweries that we've been in negotiations with that have been looking to come to the site, all names that you would know well, one formerly from Norwood. So, we would love to have them there if we can. But a lot of them wanted to be in the clock tower itself and we felt like that was detracting from the clock tower. It also would not create more successful development. And what I mean by that is, by keeping the brewery in the front, potentially, people would come in there and not come into the site. We wanted a balanced site. We want the office to take off. We want people that are working in the office buildings to have a place to grab lunch. So, we tried to balance the retail in the middle of the site, but still keep the overall aesthetic. So, adjustments in the back portion, we moved the family park over. We felt like the family park just felt like an afterthought. So, what we did was where the water feature was before, we've created a splash pad, some other places for kids to play. And we've kept it more concentrated in the middle, that they're a part of the development, not an afterthought. We originally were showing units, our perspective units, on top of what is going to be the proposed parking garage. Unfortunately, the structural engineers came back and said that's not possible without significant shoring. When they originally built this building, they didn't have to think about wind shear loads, stress calculations, things like that. So, they wanted the whole building to be reinforced with steel and it just basically made it unprofitable. So, what we've done is we've actually put units on the top floor that'll be lofted units. These will be targeted towards empty nesters. When we get to the unit mix, we'll talk in a minute. The average unit, there's a one bedroom with a den. It technically could be a two bedroom, but it's listed as a one with a den that's twelve hundred square feet. We're assuming these are very super luxury units that actually have parking just below them. So, people have the ability to go upstairs, but it's designed for that empty nester demographic. Given that we've got multiple buildings on the project, there's different types of tenants that we envision might be the likely tenant. We don't know where this is going to go, but you know, when you design, you try to design for certain uses and groups of people. Finally, you notice there's an expansion to the food innovation hub. We've applied for a Jobs Ohio grant. Tom at the mayor's office helped us as well. We're in a final round now for up to a two million dollar grant to help create jobs on the site. So, that will actually help fund that expansion. We've talked to some local universities about getting entrepreneurship help. So, whether these are mom and pop businesses or somebody else, that's all a part of the grant application that we go through. We will hopefully know by the first week in January, if we go to the final interview. We're the second largest project in the state of Ohio and we are the top of our list right now is what they've told us. So, that application went in this week. We're very hopeful we can do that and fund that expansion. So, Phase One. So, everything in here is what is a part of Phase One in your approval package today. That doesn't mean we're going to build all this at once. One of the reasons we'll get into in a minute is we want to make sure at all times the unit mix is balanced and the parking is balanced. We have thought out the parking, which I'll go over briefly. We've thought out the unit mix. But ultimately, what you see is the, what we call the properties down on Cattleworth. So, the corner of Cattleworth and the beach, you've got the small building and the long building behind it, as well as the building in the park and the units over the factory. That's all that's going to be initially built as part of this first part. Now, we have the ability to expand down the road to the right and we also have what was the former town home. When we rebalance this site and move the retail to the middle, the one thing that kept coming back to us from home builders was, "Hey, there's actually too much noise in this location. Can we go south? Can we go somewhere else?" So, it's not that that's off the table right now, but what actually came back from a couple of office users as well is that pad right there is the most valuable piece of real estate here. And knowing that is that there's office users that want this type of development. There's other types of retailers that want this type of space. It is not in the best interest of the project and the overall goal of funding the TIF and everything as a whole. You'll notice to the south over there, they do say three flat town homes. We don't know if those will be for sale. We don't know if they'll be for rent. We've actually allowed for them to be on the plan today, but it's all going to depend on demand. That demand is, is kind of a two-fold thing. We have a lot of people that say they want to live here, but when you talk about where construction costs sit for a home today and versus what the value can be in that immediate area, it doesn't support it. So, what we're looking at is potentially a hundred thousand dollar gap right now that still needs to be overcome. Can this be overcome? We hope it can. The other thing is the home builders we talked to, and these are very well-known home builders that were asking to come here, specifically said, "I can't sell a home until the amenities are coming in." So, they want to bring their buyer into a completed site. Because if they're going to ask you for five, six hundred thousand dollars for that house, you're going to want to make sure the amenities are actually coming along and actually built. So, what we did is we have the ability to expand units there, but likely, that building, that's the reverse L shape, for a while, is going to be parking until we figure out what the mix and the balance needs to be. But provided that it's within that residential and provided that the materials are as you guys approve, that's why we've included in this correct phase. Because honestly, in six months, we could be right back there. And as long as we meet that look, that three-story height, the overall materialness that we've approved, it just made sense to include it in the correct plan. So, that includes all public spaces. So, right now, I want to talk about that as well. Our target, we are on aggressive timeline. MSA has knocked it out of the park. In a matter of roughly four to five months, they've basically built a mini-city. We've got roughly twenty-four full-time designers working non-stop. Most of us not sleeping a lot recently, but we got it here. And we want everybody to know, the reason why is we want that main park, that market hall, that clock tower open in the summer of twenty-two, because it's the hundredth anniversary of the clock tower. A very important target that we have all been working very hard to hit. We just announced as well, today, the HDC is a general contractor. We will have the first round of initial bids back by December twenty-fifth. So, we have them on a month-to-month contract right now until we know that we have all our approvals. Once we have our approvals, we release the architects to finish their drawings. We have stopped the drawings for roughly thirty to sixty days right now because until we know we're approved, that's another million dollar slug we have to invest. And it's, it's, the numbers are wrapping up quickly as many of you probably know. So, what is the unit one phase mix? So, right now, the unit one phase mix that you have in front of you, the initial build is roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-three units. Of that two-hundred-and-fifty-three is roughly sixty-five percent ones and thirty-five percent twos. But what I wanted to point out in this is if you actually include those lofted units for the dens, those luxury units above there, it actually pushes the mix to fifty-five, forty-five. It's almost a fifty-fifty split. Now, for a traditional suburban product, that's about right. But an urban product, we typically see seventy, thirty. So, we want you guys to know as well, it will be dependent on demand what those other buildings look like. But right now, including those lofted units, we are almost a fifty-fifty ratio. So, we have a nice mix there. But when we do that balanced mix, we also have to think about parking because the empty nester that might rent that likely will have two cars. But it's a roommate situation, what that looks like. So, in a two-bedroom unit, we usually want to see about a one-thirty to one-forty parking ratio. On a one-bedroom, we want to see about a one-fifteen to a one-twenty-five. And on a studio, it's a one to one. The reason why is given the price points of some of the one bedrooms today, we have to see a lot of married couples that come in and want to rent. So, we figure about a one-point-two-five is about one in every four is a married couple in our one bedrooms today to save money for a down payment on a home, financial situations, whatever it is. The final thing we wanted to point out was, we had heard from quite a few people, you know, we need a few more affordable units. So, we go ahead to the drawing board and go, "What can we do?" We call it a micro unit or a studio. It's the same thing we're doing in a few other areas. We have twenty-five units in this first phase that'll allow somebody to live at this project for roughly eight hundred dollars a month. In a new construction product in the city, we feel like that's a very good value compared to anybody immediately across the highway. There's not a ton, but we've given the option to give pricing flexibility and we hear the community loud and clear that we need to give some options for people that can't afford the higher rent. This is not a section-eight unit. This is not a subsidized unit. This is one-hundred percent market rate. It is just a smaller unit that allows somebody still to live there without having the big space. Same fixtures, same everything. So, let's talk about the parking real quick. There's just shy of seven hundred parking spaces on the site. I know this came up, somebody from the city had reached out to me the other day. I didn't know who it was. They mentioned there might be a few concerns about how the parking is going to take place. This parking supports the entire Phase One, built out, including a hundred percent of the retail at market parking ratios. So, what I will admit is, are we heavily parked to the north? And the answer is yes. In an ideal scenario, in an ideal world, we would have moved the factory to the middle of the site. We just can't do that. So, the parking garage is to the north, but overall, we feel the parking is balanced. So, I wanted to kind of talk about what our approach was. Remember from the beginning, we wanted to build an urban district that was not a visible parking lot. When you come in, it is a true village feel, not what Rookwood does. And that's what the neighbors wanted as well. So, if you notice, the buildings are the street, the parking is hid behind the buildings and this is all strategic and on purpose. Number two, we want to support local traffic via bike infrastructure. So, if you live at the Nyer property coming across the highway or you live a couple of blocks away, we want you to walk to our site. We want you to bike to our site. So, we've got bike drops built into the property. We've got bike drops built into the garage. We've actually got a changing station if you have a problem with your tires. So, we've got three different locations where you can put bikes on the site or physically find a way to walk if you're a local family without physically having to bring your car. Also, the turnaround loop in the front now allowed us to have, we're calling it the fifty-two car pickup, the ability to do some ride share in the front, that people can ride share if you want to come to brewery, you want to come somewhere else. You can be responsible and not drive your car and have a place to put it. So, we, we've thought about how that parking's going to go. The other thing I want to talk about is rented spending habits. So, in a project like this, where ultimately you can have five to seven hundred residents here, a lot of those people are going to be frequenting these restaurants. A lot of those people are going to be frequenting the brewery. So, when you want to calculate a ratio, you have to assume that a solid ten to twenty percent of those people might actually already be on the site as it is. And our traffic guys can talk about, they ran some calculations. The highest pedestrian ratios are actually within our own site when you run those calculations. So, finally, there is some additional off, parking to come online. So, when we build the office, we are dividing this into two parcels. Part of the reason is because Jobs Ohio has reached out to us and said if this is a separate parcel, we can apply for a separate grant when an office tenant wants to come. The second thing is, we assume that we're probably going to need some type of garage. If we want a bigger office building here, it needs to come under a separate TIF down the road, a separate agreement with the city, a separate bite of the apple for everybody to find a way to get into the deal. So, and if you look at the northern buildings that are on here as well that are carved out, there's roughly additional seventy-five or so spaces that'll come on with those buildings too. All those spaces are not accounted for in these ratios. We have the ability as well to do some other surface parking until those buildings comes online. So, I do want to point out a couple of things because this was brought up as well. Norwood zoning code. The Norwood zoning code only requires one parking space per residential unit. There's not a specific ratio and there are actually no parking, commercial parking requirements. If you remember, I think it was in our second planning commission meeting, we were talking about that. Mr. Brown had pointed out at that point, you know, there's no ratios here. Well, that's fine. We still realize it's important. Again, so our initial build is two-hundred-and-fifty-three units and there's almost seven hundred parking spaces. If you use a ratio, a blended ratio, one-point-two to one-point-three-five spaces per unit plus approximately a hundred and eighty spaces to support the forty thousand square feet of commercial, including the market hall, we're right at six-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces that we need for Phase One and we're proposing just shy of seven hundred. So, that is a fully built-out Phase One with the infrastructure and parking we're building today actually supports the full build-out. Now, again, if it's not working, we are going to wait to bring some of those buildings online because if we have to make adjustments, the unit density just has to come down and we know that. So, I just wanted to bring that up while we could. So, with that, may I hand over Chris Bunjak with MSA, who's going to talk to us.
How are you guys?
Good.
Fine. Could you give your name, sir, and your company address?
Yes. My name is Chris Bunjak. I am with MSA Design. We're working with Nick in PLK as well as a couple of other consultants that you guys will hear from. We are located at three-sixteen West Fourth Street, downtown Cincinnati, Ohio. So, again, I'm going to briefly touch upon, as Nick had mentioned, some of the materials and what you guys see coming out of the ground and what all these, the various structures are going to be clad with. But before I get to that slide, just to kind of give you the three major drivers or influences as to why we chose or the material palette you're going to see. The first one was celebrating the historical significance of the site. Obviously, it's very manufacturer, industry-heavy throughout its entire life. And the materials usually associated with it, as you saw on the buildings that were there, you've got brick, you've got concrete, you've got steel. So, a lot of what you're going to see here parks back to that, at least a nod, references to the past, but changes it up just a little bit. Second influencer, we've got a mix, obviously, of existing and new buildings. They did not go through and completely leveled the site. They obviously kept four key structures that are there, one being the clock tower, one being the factory building, the third, which we were calling the food innovation hub or market hall, and the smokestack. So, there's already a design aesthetic onsite. I believe all those structures are masonry, already single homogeneous color. So, we had to be sensitive with what we're bringing in because what we're doing, new, has to not only talk to itself from a material palette and, you know, visual aesthetic, but it's got to talk back to the existing structures that are already on site as well. Again, another nod back to the historical significance of the site. And the third is just the existing off-site edges of the site, which cannot be ignored. Essentially, we know we're bordered to the north by rail line. You're bordered to the east primarily by highway. But south and west have significant contextual elements that are going to abut this site directly. And again, it's a fair amount of industry and residential. So, those three influencers are kind of what drove us to where we are or why we chose what we did. And then maybe the, the application I'll go through, which is the goals of some of these structural material choices. Be true to the past, respect the history, and basically provide authentic solutions. That, that was primary goal number one with this. The new material selections you guys are going to see are ones that are conventionally associated with an industrial factory area. Again, that's a nod back to the past. You're going to see a lot of brick. You're going to see a lot of steel, concrete, metal panels where necessary. And then we also wanted the new buildings to be visually identifiable against the old. Again, I had mentioned that this project is a mix of new and old. We didn't want to come in with brand-new buildings and basically just put everything in the buff masonry color that currently exists. That may become a little bit drab on the eye, but we wanted the materials to talk to one another while having. while having any user or resident that come on site. You know, as Nick had mentioned, we have the new building directly beneath or directly adjacent to the clock tower, having those two side by side, but allowing the new to be the new, which talks to the old, but being able to see the old clock tower, you know, isolated, you know, basically preserved in its historical format. So getting to the slide that we have up there, that's the central residential building and that just gives you an idea of how and where material placements are going to go. Again, I had mentioned there's a strong mix of masonry, metal panel, glazing, steel. Again, we're all applicable. So kind of the benchmark which we have here is the stone base, I'm sorry, the masonry base with basically metal panels alternating between, you know, a copper tone and gray tone. Kind of just giving the, finishing out the remainder of the elevation to kind of break up because it's a large building to break it up from a massing and scale perspective. You will see a darker color palette. Again, I had mentioned we do want to have some contrast between old and new. And again, the darker tones are to give it a much more sophisticated feel. Again, staying true to the historical manufacturing and industry component of the site. And again, we also, with some of these materials, wanted the new to feel, I mean, I'd call it seasoned, if you will, and a little bit rustic. We didn't want this development to have a brand-new sheen. So again, lots, it harks back to a lot of some of the material selections with the metal panel and the stone, just getting more of a permanent feel as opposed to some more contemporary structures you see that rely on the different materials, which I'll go through here in a moment. So go to this slide. This slide is in the application we did before. And you can see the nine primaries that are to the left. Again, I had mentioned the brick. We will have, we will have some exposed structure, steel, glass, metal panel siding, various forms, some wood, fiber cement siding and concrete. Now, what speaks to me in this slide as well is almost, and just almost as importantly, are the materials we have specifically excluded that we do not anticipate on the site, that being ephesus and vinyl siding. Again, I talked a lot of being authentic to the site and bringing, you know, having a nod back respecting the history of it and the adjacent properties. We know ephesus and vinyl is just, it's not, it's not a fit. It wouldn't even fit the contextual portion of the neighborhood and it does nothing for what the site was historically. So again, I just want to point out, you guys can see the nine materials. Pay close attention to what will not be there. And again, you know, I had mentioned, we just want a high level of authenticity and sophistication with what we are putting forth. So we think this material palette is a very classic one. It's stately. It's not, it's bold in what it brings forth, but it's not very loud. Again, it's going to be respectful to the edges of what exists as well as the buildings that are currently on site. We did not want this development to appear as though it was basically just dropped out of the sky, letting it land. We want it basically to be organically built and look like, you know, potentially it could have always been there. Everyone knows it wasn't, but we want the new to speak to the existing that's still on site while maintaining a high level of respect to the south and, south and west. So, you know, the goal is really just to celebrate what was there and to celebrate the present day with the material selections.
I like.
I think those are my two slides. And I think with that, I think we do go to, we'll dive into the traffic component.
Thanks, Chris.
Justin Verse with BX and BX Engineering, 602 Lila Avenue, Millbrook, Ohio. I'm going to go briefly through the traffic. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it because if you read the big, big traffic report, you've already fallen asleep once and I don't want to do that to you again. Everybody just wants to know the traffic works. That's what, nobody wants to know all the details, they want to know the traffic works. So we came in a couple of months ago, gave you a very brief update. Just said we're working on traffic study. We've studied several intersections. We talked about some potential improvements. Since then, we've done a lot of work. We've, if you look at the slide, I know it's hard to see, but all the circles are intersections that we've studied. We've had cameras up, we've studied the traffic. We know how much traffic's moving through all those intersections. We know where everybody's going. We've done a full traffic study to ODOT standards. We haven't submitted it to ODOT, this is for a study in Norwood. But I'm comparing everything to ODOT standard. That's kind of what your standard, the higher Department of Transportation, we're trying to meet their standards. If we look at ODOT standards, none of the intersections we looked at warrant a traffic signal. Just looking at it from an overall standpoint, traffic volume-wise, there's not enough traffic that ODOT would say you get a signal. We're not dealing with ODOT, we're dealing with Norwood. So we're looking at things a little bit differently. To give you guys a little bit of perspective, for anybody that was around in the 90s when the factories were all running there, when this, when this opens up and all our traffic is there, there's less traffic in those intersections than there were when those factories were operating at full speed. So just kind of a rough comparison, we're not to that level. But we want this project to work well. We want people to be able to get in and out easily. We don't want them to say, I was able to make it here. I want them, I want to be smooth to get in and out. So what we've recommended to the developer and what they proposed is that we are going to propose a improvement to the intersection at Forest and Park. That's the main intersection, that's the focus. If you ask ODOT, they're going to say you don't need a signal there. We're saying that the traffic's not bad enough that you need one, but we want to make it good. We want to make it really easy to flow through there. So we're proposing an improvement there. We haven't designed that yet. We don't know if it's going to be a traffic signal or a roundabout. I personally would like the roundabout there. The traffic works better with a roundabout than with a signal. There's some restrictions there as far as how much property is there, how much room there is on park to build it and can we physically build it. So we're working on that. So we can't tell you yet if it's going to be a roundabout or a traffic signal, but we will do one of those two at Park and Forest to make sure the traffic flows smoothly through there. When we came in a couple of months ago, we talked about there would likely be a second intersection that would need some improvements. The traffic study doesn't really bear that out. Again, there's nothing that has to have a signal. But right now, the next closest intersection that 20 years down the road will be getting kind of close to maybe needing a signal would be up to the north at Norwood and Forest. I know the city had expressed some concerns about down at the southeast at Robertson and Beach that there were concerns that that might be a signal. Everything we've studied indicates that the larger amount of traffic is going to be up north at Norwood. 20 years from now, when this thing's built out and the city still continues to grow, we still don't meet ODOT standards for a traffic signal up there. But we think it's, it's close enough that we think we're going to want to do something. Now, keep in mind, we're doing this traffic study in the middle of COVID. People's driving patterns are weird, things are changed around. We've been comparing our traffic numbers to numbers that were taken 10 years ago and 20 years ago by ODOT. And there's some weird things in there. There's more traffic in certain areas than we think there would be. So I say take the traffic study with a grain of salt. It's a little bit of a weird time to do the traffic study. So what we have proposed is that we anticipate the likelihood for a second intersection needing some improvements. What we're, what we're asking is that instead of doing those improvements now, which we would, we would recommend would be up at Norwood and Forest, we would like to go back and study the traffic again once the development has opened up. Once our traffic's there, we see who's coming out of Oakley, who's coming off of lateral, where people are moving, moving around to and from, update our traffic study and then make that final decision of where, where is the traffic? Maybe we'll see more, more traffic coming from Robertson than we anticipated. Maybe we won't. But at least at that point, we'll really know, where are people coming from? So there's nothing critical right up front that we need that signal or roundabout, whatever it is, right up front. So what we've proposed is right up front would be, would be Park and Beach. Sorry, Park and Forest, improvements there, either roundabout or a signal. And then after we've opened up and all our traffic's there, we'll analyze it again. The developer would like to reserve funds, whatever that mechanism is, provide the funds there for that second intersection so the money's there. But we just don't want to spend that money until we know exactly where it's really needed. That's pretty much the quick gist of it. I've got my traffic engineer, John, here with me today, Tyler from our office also. So we're, all three of us are available for questions. If you want to ask a technical question, John will probably answer it. If it's a general traffic question, I'm happy to answer it. But that's the, that's the main gist of traffic for that.
So, thanks, Justin. Thanks, everybody. So I know this has been lengthy, so I will do my best to be a little brief. But as Nick mentioned, trail connectivity is really important to Peter and we know it's important to your residents and to you guys and certainly to our whole company. So we've had some really positive conversations with our friends at Tri-State Trails. I know that they have also introduced themselves and been to a couple of council meetings and to your consulting council. So we are exploring a lot of different options. Everything from connectivity in and around our site to our adjacent properties, so Forest and Park, to a full Wausen Way connectivity. So in other words, extending Factor 52 all the way to the part of Wausen Way that is built today. And so we have a couple preliminary cost estimates for in the development, around the development, and all the way to Wausen. So this is really just getting started. But where I think we're headed and where I need a little bit of direction and a call to action is we really want this to be a robust partnership where PLK is just one or two voices at the table. We know this is important to us, we want to be a key investor, we want to make sure this is, remains a priority. But I think we really want this to be everything from Tri-State Trails to members of the community, elected leadership, friends on, you know, council and also here in Planning Commission, but also who are the key leaders in the community where pedestrian connectivity and bicycles are a passion project and something that they know well. So you can, you know, message us on our Facebook page or find us a handful of ways. But we're really looking to just get this started. This is going to be an ongoing part of our project, probably for the next year or two, as we build this out. But again, we, we heard this loud and clear and a lot of our community engagement of pedestrian connectivity. And I think that we really want to make this a priority and it's important to Peter. So again, my name's Colleen Reynolds. Sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. Part of the PLK team, providing community and government relations. So more soon, but we're excited to talk through this and hear more from your residents and you guys. We've got, again, preliminary cost estimates, but this is just getting started. Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. And I won't add anything else unless you guys have any questions, so.
Any other representatives in front of your seat? Okay. We'll get the questions.
Yeah. Do you want me to sit down or do you want me to ask?
Ah, you can sit down, unless you want to just, unless you want to stand there, it doesn't matter. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Or anyone like to speak against the proposal? Anyone that would like to speak against the proposal? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I would make that motion.
Mr. Schneider?
A second.
Mr. Murphy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now go back into our regular meeting. Any discussion on this? Any questions you would like to ask representatives? I have a few, but.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. Sure. In talking about the, the fit and finish of the buildings and the exterior materials and within this packet, one of the questions came up is it's on this, on one page it says approved materials. Is that approved by Peter Cleecamp?
No, it's recommended approved materials. So I think the language, yeah, so what we're saying is ultimately, so we were told at the beginning that this needs to be a book that once we're all gone and somebody else is here, that they can read it and see what's approved and what's not. So we were assuming this is a guide or framework. You're right, that is 100% up to you. That was what we are recommending to be approved and then you would have a book. So if it needs to be.
I like the materials. Don't go, don't go. And even the presentation, as you talked about, as you talked about the exterior and I know it wasn't even potentially Nick that was talking about it, but I like the, I felt like the feel of it is more of a European village with these type of finishes. And I don't want to say IKEA, but the Swedish makes them pretty good. And if you go, if you are in, in, you know, the European areas, they have these same type of finishes on the exterior of those buildings. I know there was a question brought up by, by our chief building official about the exterior and maybe it not, not lending itself specifically to the, the brick, you know, faith that was on all those other buildings. I don't think we're trying to replicate that exact same look. We want to meet some of those things. So I, I think that was good and I, the excluded materials, I think is a good idea also. So those were two things that I looked at. I just was not sure who was, who approved those materials. But I, I do somewhat approve of those materials, but it takes more than that.
If Chris was here, he'd be smiling.
Yeah, Chris Brown.
The other, the other part that came up to me was really talking about the traffic study and, and, you know, we all recognize that we're living in a strange time and traffic patterns are all crazy. I understand there's some different ideas. My big one would be that the funds are in place in the future when we run into traffic problems and how we reserve those funds and put them, set them aside so that in the future we can make changes to make improvements. Because guaranteed, much like it was with Rookwood years ago, there were challenges and we did have to go back to the drawing board and, and there was a lot of stuff that we thought we had good plans on, but didn't quite work the way that we, we had expected them. So that, that was two of my big ones. I, I still feel like traffic's going to be a challenge in the future. And when you talked about parking, and I know you, you gave some good explanations on parking and on, on, you know, developing a historic property and trying to save certain elements of it and how you can't just move everything where it needs to be. I understand that. 700 parking spots, you're talking about 122 apartments and then 232 apartments and then all the people that are going to be coming there. I think that's going to be a concern in the future. It sounds like you're, you've got some plans in place and there's, there's some structure there, but it's, it's still going to be, that's still going to be a significant issue, in my opinion. Those are really a couple, just a couple of my quick questions, John.
I was talking to Carrie. This may have been brought up. The M2 zoning needs to be addressed for the residential uses?
We approved that in the last commission with the preliminary as well.
Okay, yeah, this is dated from a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that should be taken care of.
Yeah, I believe you guys already, the zoning was already changed, as far as I know.
That's one of the ordinance that I gave you, sir. The ordinance.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And let's see.
Can I, can I jump in, John?
Go ahead.
The townhouse part also was a concern of mine and, and Nick, I, I still feel that that provides a stability part to the development. And I realize you had some, there's some reasons why it's not showing up on here now. But I, that is an important factor when it comes to a community and people investing in a specific portion of the community. Renters, as much as I like renters and they, they bring a lot to the community, they're not putting, you know, $100,000 of their skin into the game where townhouse, when people put, purchase townhouses or condos or things like that, it's a much different type of ownership. So I, I still, I'm, as that came up and as I saw that marked out of there, it made me a little nervous. I didn't feel like having 18 townhomes there was going to provide much of it, but there was at least a piece of that.
We are committed, the way we had to show that the 72 and the reverse all done there, we are continuing to explore it. The one thing that we kept running into an issue was, given the historic industrial use here, we have to do vapor barriers. So like to explain to a home buyer in some of these spots that you have to have a vapor barrier under your home or something else is not the easiest thing to do. But we absolutely respect that. That's why we wanted them there to begin with. But then everybody sat back and even all the office brokers, everybody going, I want that parcel. I want that parcel. I'm like, well, if this is what it takes to land an office tenant, if, if that's what I need to do, I'm going to do it. So, you know, I mean, what I will say is this too, Peter wanted to sell them as well and we had to convince him to wait a little bit because it is, we could make a quick hit, make some money quickly and offset some of the costs, but is that the best long-term solution? So you have my commitment that we'll continue to explore it. If we do, there's no way we could do the, the other part of the L. It would just have to be the bar because we could not build in that area without a vapor barrier in the south. There's nothing wrong with it, it's just required because of what the historic use was in that area. So we're not worried about any environmental issues. Actually, all environmental issues are cleaned up, so I, I'll stop talking at that.
Nick, there was one other item that I saw from, in Mr. Bly's comments. The onsite detention area is indicated in the plan notes, but not shown on the drawings.
It's all underground now. Likely, a lot of it's going to be in the park. So if you look at the park now, the park is actually a tiered park. We wanted to make sure we had some built-up areas. We've got that area that's like a small stage. So a lot of the detention is in the main park areas and wherever we can put it, so.
Is that noted anywhere in here?
I don't think, is it in there, Chris?
I think it's on, I think it should be on the civil plans and it's all, it's all below grade.
below grade.
It's all below grade?
Yes.
The civils, that should be in there with the roads and the utilities and things like that, I'm sorry, I don't...
Utility sheet, there's like four or five civil, the lorry looking sheets, civil on here, sheet on there, together. There's a utility sheet in there, it's got the passing gray, gray half carries that indicate the three or four locations of underground detention.
Yep, that one. What page that is, Carrie, at the top?
What page is it?
28.
Sorry, there's a lot there.
You should see one under the, under the park, and one to the south, south end, and one to the northeast corner.
Right, okay.
It's kind of like a red mob on there.
Okay.
Those are the approximate footprints of how much space we take to fit them in there.
It's actually on all of them, that's just the page I was looking at, it's on 26.
Yeah, above-ground detention just forces us, it reduces our revenue potential, and it just, we have to maximize. The one thing that you'll notice here is, we want this to be a destination, we all do. So the only way we do it is to find a way to support that destination. Between the parking garage, the parks, everything else, you're talking close to $15 million in infrastructure that have to be absorbed somewhere. So our job is to maximize this site, because that's the way we're going to be able to pay for everything. It's essentially adding $15 million to the land cost, because something has to eat that cost somewhere. So we just...
What else does that, the investment of the clock tower was more expensive than we initially thought it was going to be, but, you know, we know that that was our number one priority that came out of our community engagement, so that, that was important as well. I wanted to address Mayor Snyder, your question about traffic as it relates to, at the last planning commission, and Nick wasn't with us, so I'm just going to jump in, we talked about potentially escrowing certain funds, or your, your point about if we know we're going to need certain lights, or where we're going to actually put all of that, that PLK remains committed to putting that money aside to make sure that that is a priority. So to your question, I know we talked about that as a maybe at the last planning commission, but it's of course on our list to do.
Any other questions? Comments?
Hold on a minute, let's, let's check our list here. The onsite detention was a big one. That's a, and, you know, they did onsite detention at Surrey Square when they did the big thrift, or Kroger expansion. I remember them digging it up and doing onsite detention that same way, so that's interesting.
I was thinking a detention area is like where the prison would be.
Yeah.
It's pretty expensive.
Yeah, I know. I was thinking of retention, yeah.
Number 12 on here was signage parameters, that there's no, there are no detailed signage information.
We fully anticipate we'll be back with a detailed signage plan. We wanted to give some enough vague parameters. The one thing that we don't know the answer to, for instance, is the retail going to be a script writing above the audience? What is it going to look like? And honestly, we just have to focus on finishing the buildings right now. So I, we fully, we fully anticipate we'll be back for those.
My last one will be, is the clock tower operational, meaning the clock will be working? Thus, there will be the observation, the observation deck above that?
So we're working with Verden Bell. So right now, the main mechanism that's there, we always knew, they were just going to clean up, they really couldn't restore it anyway. They were going to put a new system on top that actually spun it. So now I have, Verden has the plans that they're working on, but what they're talking about is finding a way to make each clock operational independently, and then we can still run through the metal, then we'll take the mechanicals, and we'll actually bring it down to the first floor where the public can see it. When they said, would we, the change in this clock tower, I love it, but it's about $4.5 million.
Yeah, I know.
And I hear about it every day. So, but I will tell you, when we go to Summit Park and you see what they have there, and realize we're about 20-foot below them, you have some incredible views up there. Now, it's not going to be huge. We also know that we can't charge. So we're looking at establishing what's called a new community authority. So if you come have a beer, you come have something else, we'll be able to add an incremental sales tax to help subsidize that down the road, because we understand the tip can't necessarily do it all. So we're, we're exploring options. But the other thing that we did too, is you don't, you know, we kept our materials to that manufacturing look, allowed us to actually save a little of the funds too, and put it back towards that building and truly spend it in the interest.
John? Yes?
Yeah, Nick, on item six on Mr. Bly's comments about, it seems the parking is unworkable, and he's laying out the central building with the number 122 spots. And then the comment that gets my eye attention is, additional parking will be available, but it's a long walk carrying your groceries, and, you know, as far as a tenant in that one building, and it, it looks like it would be, because there's so many units, but it seems that the parking is, is north of there.
Your tapped computer cellphone. No, I get that call every day, so I'm going to handle the groceries. There's a couple of things. If you look to our southern building here on the site plan, right there, there's actually a drop-off. Really hard to see here, but on that main road there, we actually have a bunch of parallel spaces that are loading, unloading. We actually have a loading room, so we have move-in, move-out, so they actually can drop their things off. We've essentially took out one unit to do it, they can move their truck, and they can get it off the roads. This is an urban product in a suburban location. So what we have there is, so John, for instance, there'll be lockers, so if you parked your car outside, you bring your groceries in. That main central building will park in the parking garage. So you say, well, how far is that walk? That walk is approximately, from your car parked to your room door, about 120 feet. So if you measure it off, like we measure in our office, because everybody kept saying it feels long, but if you go walk it, it's no different than me walking down the hall at my office. So it's really not far. The length of the building is actually twice the length of the building to the garage. That length of the building's about 360 feet. So if you go from one side of that residential building, that is a huge building. So just to kind of give you an idea of like how far it goes, but we definitely have a drop-on, drop-off for groceries. I would also say with this resident population, many of them will actually probably eat at the food hall, probably use some type of grocery delivery service. So, and all of our new residents is now we have hot and cold storage for delivery of groceries, because most people are having them delivered and not going out and getting them anymore. Or if they do, it's some type, at least that demographic is, so. But it's a valid question, and it's something that we as an organization will be having even after it's open. Thank you.
Didn't, didn't we have a discussion about groceries at the last meeting? I'm serious, about this property?
All it was ours, I, I have it like every day.
Getting close to five, you know, dinner time.
Top of mind these days.
Yeah, it is.
Any other comments, questions? All right, is there, I'm asking for a...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, a motion for a recommendation to council for the final planned unit development plan for Factory 52.
A good motion?
A good motion.
I make a motion that the planning commission moves this forward to...
City Council.
...for review and...
Final approval.
Yeah, final approval.
Are you recommending to council that they approve it, or are you recommending to council that they not approve?
Yes, we are recommending that they approve it.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second that.
A third? Misses Towne, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Director Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinker?
Yes.
Can you reread that motion?
We made a motion to, that planning commission recommend to council to approve the final PUD plan for the Factory 52.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to get back into another public hearing. Jeff Cyrus, architect representing the owners of 4620 Wesley Avenue, N-Cor Technology, located within a central business district with a planned unit development overlay, CBD/PUD, is requesting a minor change to the PUD for a loading dock addition and the installation of an eight-to-10-foot security fence.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to...
I'm sorry, I have a mouse.
We don't have a mouse, we have a keyboard. Oh, this one or that one? We did.
Jeff, did you have a presentation?
If I can get my laptop to hook up to that, and my mouse will reach that far.
Jeff, thank you. Go ahead. Chad, and I'm sorry. I am so sorry, Chad.
While you're doing that, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the change, then I'm sure this gentleman...
I will speak in favor.
Okay. Hmm?
He had mentioned to me that he had a presentation.
Okay.
You might need to turn our mouse back on and look out of it. You need to turn it back on.
If this doesn't work, they only have one additional sheet.
Yeah, I have.
What I'm adding here is just a color site plan and a more detailed...
IT is already left for today, so I'll call him.
Need some tech guys here. Anybody from tech?
If you can just get the input on the monitor right, I think it would be okay.
Should show it up?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, for cat layer, I didn't bring my cord.
Can we just go off this?
Yeah, I think we can.
Okay.
So I, I think what we submitted initially, the overall site plan completed by Clinders shows cut sheets, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Cyrus, Champlin Architecture, 720 East Pete Roseway, Suite 140, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202.
Thank you.
The first sheet, the C100, shows cut sheets of the proposed fence that we plan on putting around the perimeter, or a majority of the perimeter of the property. And what I brought around to you are actually colored cut sheets of that, so you can see a little more detail to that. The C200 sheet is showing some of the existing conditions and a little bit of the demo that we're going to take care of, and to take care of the loading dock addition, which is on the northeast corner of the building. So if you're looking at the monitor, it is the little green square. Do you mind if I stand up here and...
No, that's fine.
Okay. So essentially, what we're looking at here, the loading dock is about 1,100 square feet. It's an 18-foot height structure, and it's going to have finishes that are going to match the existing facility, which is, which is evil. The blue line is showing the proposed fence location. It's basically there to enclose, to secure the facility because of what's going on inside and the data that needs to be protected.
Look, I know it's difficult, but the mic's there.
Well, I think...
I meant, not hoarding mic. No.
So our, the, the blue line on that image is not showing up that well. That is where we plan to put this fence. Everything shown there, less the southern border, will be eight-foot fence of that impasse style that's shown in the additional paper that I gave out to you. The fence along the south border is a 10-foot fence. And the reason we're going up two feet there is because between the two pieces of property, the grade falls about four feet and about six feet. So we need to raise the height if we're going to stay on our property line to get the security that we need. Now, what else we're proposing is, the green line we're showing is a six-inch curb. Right now, there are signs on either end of the facility where it enters off of Forest, and where it enters off of Wesley that says no through traffic. And there's a significant amount of traffic, you can actually see from the sky shot there where they've worn the, the covering off of the parking lot. So the intent is to stop traffic from driving near the facility. What we're proposing is, the path would, as you enter off Wesley, you would make an immediate left, and you would stay off of the black surface area, go up around the top.
Give me your finger.
Oh, yeah, sure, thank you. This is Dave Burns, he's one of the owners at Hahnover Technologies.
So, right here, or the left side?
Yes, so, yeah, so you'll be, if you go up above the red line, you'll be up on the lighter part of the parking lot, go north and along, yeah, up along that side, and then circulate down and around back out to Forest, if people choose to still drive through here. But that's the, the black area is the area we are trying to secure from public access.
Troy, am I missing some things? Just the arm gate, arm gate that's going to be on the...
Yes, off of Wesley, the way we're going to control that, we will have an arm gate there. So essentially, the sequence of security will be, any visitor or employee will have a card, or they'll have to call the airphone from the gate, from the initial gate. If you're a visitor, you will be allowed to drive in and park in the northern portion of the lot, outside the fence, but still inside the curb. If you are an employee or someone that needs to do work proper on the data center, not a visitor, you will be allowed in through a second gate. You will have a card or an airphone there, and the guard will allow you access inside the perimeter of the fence. We met with the fire department out there back in, I think, October, maybe September. They requested that we have a manual gate for them, so we provided that on the east end, coming off of Forest. We'll have a Knox box there, so they can get that gate open, immediately slide it open, and have access to the property.
From which side?
From the, the forest entry, this side that Dave is pointing.
So the far entry is going to be the fire department's entrance?
Correct.
So, so the fire department, when they leave the firehouse, has to drive all the way around to the back of the property to go into the property?
No, they can still get...
They can access all parts of it.
They have both access. Yeah, they have access.
I asked, I asked the chief about that, and he said there's no problem with this size.
All right.
They, they will have access from here as well?
Correct. They'll be coming in off of Wesley, in the upper-left corner there of the building. They will have access to both of those locations, but they also requested an additional access on the east side of the property. The intent is to have, anyone that's non-emergency, non-first responder will all be coming in off of the Wesley entrance, and exiting that way as well.
Will the police department have access to that also?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
Can you outline where the fence will be, using your finger, where the fence will be in front of the building? So that is different than what I see on this drawing. On this drawing, it has you going to the first parking area. Is this not the fence right here?
No.
There's, there's nothing showing on that, which is what he just pointed at. He, he came all the way out here and pointed across.
This...
Here's parking against the building, here's the first parking.
I think you're correct. This is, so the, we, the fence is here, right?
Yeah, so that's different than what we're seeing on here.
In truth, yes.
Correct. This is where that's supposed to, this blue line is supposed to be right here.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
So, so this is correct?
That is correct, yes.
This is what we are proving is correct?
Yes.
That would be C300 then?
C300, yes.
Okay.
And you're still, the, the red line, or the green line up there, where you said you were putting a curb across that parking, will that go against, so now, instead of it being one, there's two, will there be green parking curb against, in that area also?
No, the, the green line as it's shown there is, is accurate.
Okay, but where the purple, blue, whatever the color is, that blue line, there will be nothing, there will be no stopping traffic from driving through that area?
Correct.
Well, it would still be this.
There you go.
And what we're doing here is another arm gate, similar to what we're doing at this entrance.
Which still pushes them, okay. That, that makes sense to what you were saying about pushing through traffic up.
Right. They're essentially going to ride the property line to get through this piece of property. Right, they're essentially going to ride the property line to get through this piece of property, which says no through traffic on either side anyway.
Are, are there sign, is there signage there that says no through traffic?
There have been, and people ignore them.
Yeah, okay.
And they go through there pretty quickly.
Not that I drive through there all the time. I don't remember seeing the signs, but, okay, understood.
So what we're looking for is approval on the fence. It was my understanding that typically, six feet is what you see, we're going a little higher to secure the property and then...
Can you clarify why you need to secure the property with that type of fence?
Dave, you want... Let me come up. Hi, my name is Dave Burns, I'm with Encore Technologies, 4620 Wesley Avenue, Norwood. And, and let me just correct, Jeff, I have nothing to do with the ownership of Encore, my brother is the owner of Encore Technologies. He is under COVID protocol right now, staying at home, otherwise, he, he would have been here himself. We have a, a customer that's a, a large financial customer, and whenever we work with large financial customers, we're always under a nondisclosure agreement with them, and so we are not allowed to disclose who that customer is in public. And we certainly could disclose who that is in private. My guess is, you all know who these customers of ours are, you've, you've heard their names, but a very large financial organization would like to move their primary data center organization, so when you swipe your credit card at Kroger or wherever, those transactions will actually be happening at our facility at 4620 Wesley. So they would like to move their primary data center from Florence, Kentucky into our facility here in Norwood. And, and it's this fencing and, and some of the other improvements like the dock that we're proposing, so that it, it will meet the needs of, of that organization.
Are we in the, I'm sorry, we're still in the public hearing, so, okay, we're not in discussion, I'm sorry.
Any further, anything further?
No.
Okay. Anybody else willing, wanting to speak in favor of this? Please give your name and your company address and name.
Correct, yeah, so Troy Messer, I work with the Kleiner's Group, and we're at 7162 Glenmore Drive is, is where I live, but it's in Westchester. I just wanted to come up to help describe with the dock area a little bit more. So what we're trying to do there is, is open up the throat for the area on that east side, so that the truck movements can actually be handled with, within the site and not out in the public right away. So, after that, it will drop down a four-foot dock down, and also have a man gate there for security to get to that dock area. So, other than that, I think we've covered it, the other man, arm gates that are out there and where the curb is gonna be placed, so.
Anyone else wishing to speak for the minor revisions within the PUD? Anyone wishing to speak against the minor provision, revision within the PUD, come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against the revision? No one willing to speak, we will now have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing on this issue.
I will second that.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Schneider, can you follow the roll, please?
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Director Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Public hearing is closed, we will now go back into our regular meeting. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Mayor?
I have some questions, if one of the representatives can come up.
Question away.
You talked, uh, we, we, you talked about the loading dock, and currently, there's a loading dock, but the way that, that the loading dock works, you come in off of the property, it looks like where your gate is. What's the, what's the necessity of the loading dock? Why do you need, why do you need that, and do you plan on having vehicles going in and out of there every day?
Um, the, the biggest necessity, I think, is because of the security around the way the dock is oriented today, does that sound right?
Correct. With, the way the dock sits now, we would be pulling back and in and out of the public way along the property line. And there is no way that we could orient the dock north-south and still secure the space without impeding on the traffic flow to the other tenants in this plant.
Frequency?
Um, there's probably at least a daily delivery, but most of those are, quite frankly, fairly small trucks. We do on occasion, when big customers are moving in or, or big refreshers are happening, we'll get semis at that dock, so we need to be able to handle a semi, but semis are probably maybe once a week or less often. By and large, it's, you know, large box trucks that are coming to the site much more than, than semis.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Murphy?
Just for the public, in my 28 years plus here with the city, I would remind those that don't know, this building was the old GM rebuild facility. When they couldn't build the car right in the first place, they took it there and fixed it. There were a number, pardon me, sir?
Oh, that hurts.
Well, they knew it. There were quite a few semis at the time that used to ingress and egress this building right out Forest Avenue. And I'm talking probably more than 10 or 20 a day, and the chairman is the same experience in the police department, I have, this was non-stop. So, one or two trucks a day, even if the semi, the way you're reorienting this will cause no problem to anybody. It's quite, it's quite commendable that you've done this, I mean, I understand the nature of your security. This then solves, anybody would complain, well, there's tractor-trailers, well, if you look across the street, Siemens has many a tractor trailer...
Right.
That comes in and out, and they've been doing that for my 28 years with the city so far. So, I commend you for what you're doing, and I understand the security is necessary, and I think it's, it's great. Am I allowed to ask about how many employees will be there?
The, um, well, so the, the customer plans on moving, it's a little hard for us to question, so I'm, I'm gonna build a space for roughly 12 people, plus managers, maybe two or three managers.
Okay.
But this is a 30, or a 24-hour-a-day operation, so I would expect there's probably, you know, 10 to 20, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and some smaller number that's there, you know, all the other hours of the day.
I was just looking at your employee parking, and it looks like...
The employee parking will be fairly minimal, so the, as, as we build out data center space, so we're gonna take, so that's 100,000-square-foot building, we already have a 10,000-foot data center in there today, and with the 10,000 feet of data center space, I need about that same amount of space for all the infrastructure that we put in. So there's massive amounts of batteries, UPSs, switchgear, that, that then, you know, feeds that data center. So from a people perspective, the number of people in that building will continue to go down over time. And, and really, when, when we looked at it and, and we talked to our employees, we actually had that fence up high initially, but most of us, when we looked at it, we said, I don't wanna go through the pain, quite frankly, to go through all the stuff to go inside the gate to park, I'm gonna park outside the gate and walk through, rather than do all the tiger teeth when I come out, and, you know, those kinds of things. So we actually feel like our employees are gonna be parking outside the big fence and walking in. But we wanted that ability, so we do have people there 24 hours a day, 365, and so those individuals, if you're coming out at 2:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the morning, we want them inside that fence, it's all lit up as it is today, but so it's secure for those individuals that would be coming at, you know, at half-hours.
Thank you. Other questions?
This, this also representative, represents, it looks like, a chain link fence with installation of slats going in. My impression was that this was not a chain link fence, it's being installed.
The chain link is actually just along the very front edge of the building, just here on the north edge. It's a small little piece that we're closing some condenser.
Okay, and then...
But the main fence is that, the larger, uh, black fence, the impasse.
My other question would be, some shielding for Forest Avenue, landscape shielding. It looks, I, I'm looking at one of these, and it looks like they've got trees sitting in what I would consider to be the loading dock area, but I, I would think that there, this fence isn't, does encompass the, what's, looks to be the employee parking area on the Forest Avenue side?
This fence is? Yes, yeah.
Is around that? So, people driving past on Forest Avenue will see this, this large barrier fence. And there's no, no landscaping whatsoever on this plan?
Correct.
I'd, I'd like to see some landscaping in that area to soften that up.
Okay.
Mostly because I don't wanna live next to a penitentiary, and although it's not a penitentiary, it'll, it's gonna be a big fence. The fence is not running along Wesley Avenue.
That is correct.
I think that's all I got. Unless we can put, get them to put a bike trail in.
Okay, uh, so I guess the only thing we've got a problem with is the landscaping.
Yeah, I think we should, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve the minor revision to the PUD contingent upon submission of landscaping, a landscape plan for shielding Forest, the fencing at Forest Avenue. Carrie, can I make that motion?
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second, I, Mrs. Sickinger. And further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Towne, could you call the roll, please? When you get a chance.
Landscaping, I'm sorry, landscaping on Forest Avenue?
Landscape plan for shielding Forest Avenue. Shielding, is that the right word? Screening, probably screening is a better...
Cover, containment?
Okay, here's a motion by Mayor Schneider, and a second by Mrs. Sickinger.
Yes.
And the, the motion on the floor is to approve the minor revision to PUD plan at 4620 Wesley Avenue, contingent upon landscaping, landscaping or screening of Forest area, the Forest Avenue area.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Director Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we only have one clean, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I have a copy of what you gave there for the record? And then this, there'll be a letter for this, and then we'll need to go back to Dan for this, and then we'll issue the permit.
We only have one communication, that's from the municipal planning commission, or from, to the municipal planning commissions of Hamilton County, from Steve Johns, the executive director, request for nominations to the regional planning commission. I'm not gonna read the entire letter, if anybody is interested in nominating themselves to be on the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, we all have the information, and it will become effective March 5th, 2021, if anyone is interested, any of the members of here. As of this time, we do not have any absent members. I have a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion, we adjourn, Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second it.
Second by Mrs. Sickinger to adjourn, Mrs. Towne, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Director Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Meetings close at 5:15, and we will meet again tentatively on January 6th, 2021. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.